Good evening, board members and residents. I'd like to call to order a regular board meeting for Monday, August 22, 2022. I'd ask that everyone present please rise for the present Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Witt, will you please take the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Backins is asked to be excused. Mr. Brado, here. Mr. Olgiati, here. Mrs. Rose?
Here.
Mr. Tommello?
Here.
Mr. Witt, here. Mr. Burkhardt?
Here. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. There was a suggestion that we might add approval, but I'll read the consent agenda as it was presented. Approval of the regular board meeting minutes of August 8, 2022. Approval of the workshop meeting minutes of August 8, 2022. Approval of the bills in the amount of $1,566,470.53. Approval of the July 2022 revenue and expenditure report. Approval of the 2022 Detroit Hot Cider Hustle, scheduled for Saturday, November 5, 2022, at Lake St. Clair Metro Parks. And approval of the 2022 Homecoming Parade Route for Lance Cruz High School, scheduled for Friday, September 30, 2022. And I believe there was a proposed addition to the consent agenda.
Yeah, we did get a check request from the Parks and Rec Committee for $1,000 to H C M A for funding a portion of H for the Holopalooza. Just that we have three weeks until our next board meeting. It was asked that it would be added to the consent agenda. So unless there's some objection, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the bills in the amount of $1,566,470.53, adding the additional check to H C M A for $1,000 for Holopalooza.
And that's from the Parks and Rec Fund, which has sufficient funds to cover. Support. We've got a motion by Mr. Witt with support by Mr. Tommello. Any discussion on the motion?
I do. I'm just curious, when we have like the workshop minutes, it says approval of the workshop minutes. There really wasn't a whole lot of detail to those. Is that's just how we do it?
Minutes only have action normally. So like, we open, we close, it's a roll call. Like, there's no real action that this board took. So absent that, you know, that's what's required. And the more verbose you get in, the more questions you get about, well, why didn't you include this?
Right.
And why did you include this? So when I do, I might try and capture high-level stuff. You know, what the purpose of the meeting was, was to talk about those things. So I tried to capture who talked and why they talked. But beyond that, I don't get into he said, she said, this public comment said that, this public comment said this.
When do you do that? When we have to have like open, we're starting it at this time, and then people come in, you're taking like their names and stuff. When is that?
When we have public hearings.
Okay.
Yep. And I remember specifically, there was a time when you had to verbatim.
For our water. So we had to do a verbatim.
Yeah. So there are times when the minutes have to be very specific, very thorough. But, you know, sometimes you're almost creating a problem when you put too much in the minutes. It's a workshop, there's really no action taken, so can't get in too much trouble.
Okay. Just wanted to ask about that. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing done, and seeing no public comment. We have a motion by Mr. Witt with support by Mr. Tommello. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda is the approval of the regular agenda. Board members, I'm not aware of any revisions to the agenda, so if not, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the regular agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Is there support?
Support.
A motion by Mr. Olgiati with support by Mr. Brado to approve the regular agenda. Any discussion, board members? Hearing done and seeing no public comment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, board. Next is announcements. I do have a few announcements. The Harrison Township Water and Sewer Department is currently looking for a utility worker to join the Harrison Township team. The chosen applicant will be part of a crew that is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the Harrison Township water and sewer infrastructure. This position is part of a collective bargaining agreement. It offers competitive wages, healthcare, dental, optical, and disability insurance, paid vacation and sick time, and a pension. For more information about the position and how to apply, visit the Harrison Township website, navigate to the employment tab. Our Harrison Township Library wants to remind you that August 25 is the last day to submit entries for their summer reading programs. So please get them in by this Thursday. The library is hosting a Make Your Own Beach Themed Photo Frame Craft Time on Thursday, September 1, at 11:00 a.m. Space is limited, so please call ahead. The library is also hosting DNR Officer Brad Silleri on Tuesday, September 20, at 7:00 p.m. Officer Silleri will inform the folks in attendance about hunting season dates, tagging requirements, safety zones, legal hunting hours, baiting, and much more. For more information on these and other great community events happening at the library, you can visit their website at htlibrary.org. Call them, 586-3291261. Or email them at librarian@htlibrary.org. The Harrison Township EDC is hosting their annual golf outing Monday, September 19. You can find signup information on the front page of the Harrison Township website. The Harrison Township Senior Center hosts a monthly casino trip on the last Friday of every month. Space is limited for these trips, so please call for details and registration. The Senior Center also features chair yoga on Tuesdays and Fridays at 1:00 p.m. for seniors to increase their strength and flexibility, as well as an aerobics strength class on Mondays at 1:00 p.m. and Fridays at 9:30 p.m. No. 9:30. Not 9:30 p.m. Mondays at 1:00 p.m. And that must be a typo. The Senior Center also hosts bingo every Wednesday at noon and euchre every Thursday at noon. The Senior Center also takes many field trips throughout the year. So for more information on times and events, call our coordinator Jen, 586-466-1497. For more information on these, as well as all other township events, you can call the supervisor's office, 586-466-1445. Visit our website at www.harrison-t township.org. Or follow us on Twitter at Harrison T W P M I. I'd also like to call up and recognize our county commissioner, Mrs. Barbara Zinner. And she asked to just say hello and make a few comments.
Hi, everyone. First, I want to thank the residents that voted for me through the primary. We have the general coming up. That'll be interesting. I heard somebody talking about roads for a minute, and I'm thinking, the roads and the phone calls I've had in a year and 18, well, it's been a year and it's almost going on two years, 18 months. And how many driveways? I've come and seen how many ditches and how many water problems. And I knew some about, something about this stuff before I took this job, but I've learned a lot more. And what I really like about it is the citizens that I met. And my daughter just moved. She and her husband just moved into a house. And it was a little bit of a long driveway. I parked near the back, so I didn't have to carry too many boxes in. And as I'm walking up, I'm looking at the scale, and how was the rain gonna fall off during all beach? I can't get this out of my mind now. And I said to my son, this is gonna be all right. And it looked different from the higher part of the driveway. He said, oh, yeah, I made sure. Easy as building ability. So I knew it was gonna be fine. But after you do a lot of these different things with all the citizens, you really look at things differently. But I like helping people, so that's all good. I've learned a lot. Ken's been very helpful. Everybody's been very helpful, but I really appreciate that. And the roads, well, you know what? The county's working on roads all over the place. Again, almost afraid to drive anywhere. How are you gonna get through the roads? But anyway, it's all better in the long run when we have better roads for everybody. So I don't want to take up any more of your time. Everything's doing good. People will be back from vacation pretty soon. They're going back and back and forth, I think, up north. There's not a lot of traffic on the weekends. That's all good. This is Michigan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you've been doing a great job as well, Mrs. Zinner. So thank you very much. Any other announcements?
Just want to let everybody know that, I know you had mentioned it, the supervisor about our golf audience, September 19. We're still looking for a few, so we'll be a few openings left. So just letting the residents know and the business owners, this is a wonderful opportunity to fellowship and to meet other business owners and people in Harrison Township. It's got a beautiful golf course in Kewaunee, good food, good camaraderie with different people from the township. So we'd love to have a few more groups get ahold of us and sign up. Like I said, it's an excellent opportunity. We've got a good committee that's been working very, very hard on it, so I think it'll be a very successful outing again this year.
It was very nice last year.
Yeah, and I'm working on my dream team so far. I have Andrew, my former deputy, coming in. And so I feel pretty good about that. I don't know if I'll have too many of my balls count, but that's okay.
Just by the way. Just bring a bankbook.
All right. Any other announcements? All right. Hearing done, we'll move forward in our agenda. It looks like next is the special assessment districts for weed control. Mr. Witt?
Yes, board. Of course, we have resolution number one for the S A D for weed control for the Venetian and Archer Drive canals. This project has been, been out in the works for a little while now, but they've circulated petitions to call for the canals to be treated with alvecyne herbicide, similar to how the other canals in the subdivision have been treated for the last almost six years now. So it does includes 115 lots of budding the canal. Before us, we have resolution number one, which basically directs my office to prepare those cost estimates and have them available for review. And then after we're done with that, we'll move on to resolution number two, which sets our first public hearing. We're proposing that to be our September 26 meeting. At this point, there, we looked at a timeline standpoint on this project to see if there was a way to get it done for this season. Given our process, there really isn't an opportunity to be able to get them, have them get any treatment this year. So there wasn't the same urgency. So we're looking to move, you know, forward to the next September meeting.
But this is really a continuation of something that we've done in the past for multiple years?
Yes. Yep. Just, we're, no, we're expanding our treatment area.
This is a new section.
A new canal.
Gotcha.
Yes. That one had been excluded previously, just a lack of interest in their initial try, you know, six years ago. But after they saw how smooth they had gone for five years, they said, hey, let's try it. They just recently got, you know, over and above that 50% threshold. I would say they're like 57% or something like that. So they meet our requirements, so we're looking to move forward on their behalf.
So maybe we call it an expansion of the current program, but this resolution before us is the result of actual signatures that have been collected. So this is, clearly, this is what the folks in this segment of that community want.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Any discussion, or is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to adopt the foregoing resolution number one for hereon point weed control. Venetian and Archer Drives S A D project is presented.
All right. We've got a motion by Mrs. Rose. Is there support?
I'll support that motion.
Supported by Mr. Olgiati. Any discussion on the motion? Pretty routine stuff, I think. We've been doing this for multiple years. And I understand they might want to expand it. Okay. Hearing no discussion and seeing no public comment. Mr. Witt, will you please take the roll call?
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Olgiati?
Yes.
Mr. Backins is excused. Mr. Brado?
Yes.
Mr. Tommello?
Yes.
Mr. Witt? Yes. Mr. Burkhardt?
Yes. All right. Next on our agenda, following up with that, is item D 2, which is resolution number two for the St. Clair Haven Weed Control, Venetian and Archer Drives. Mr. Witt?
Again, this is just setting that public, our first public hearing date for our September 26 meeting.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
All right. Is there support? All right. Flip-flopping there. Support by, motion by Mr. Olgiati with support by Mrs. Rose to adopt this resolution. Any discussion? Hearing done and seeing no public comment. Mr. Witt, will you please take the roll call?
Mr. Olgiati? Yes. Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Backins is excused. Mr. Brado?
Yes.
Mr. Tommello?
Yes.
Mr. Witt? Yes. Mr. Burkhardt?
Yes. All right. Next on our agenda, item E 1 regarding engagement with U H Y for assistance and with assistance with implementation of the new state of Michigan chart of accounts. We have our finance director here. So I'll turn it over to you.
Yep. Thank you. Good evening, board. I'm here tonight to ask you for approval to engage our current auditors into this project. We typically do engage them when we're implementing anything new that accounting rules, G A S B or F A S B pushes down on us. So the state of Michigan has been revamping their chart of accounts, which is all local entities have to follow it. Our year end is 12/31, and we have to be in compliance by 12/31. Our U H Y had actually reached out to me during our audit and asked if this is something I'd be interested in. They're helping other communities as well. They have a dedicated team for it. So they're gonna be a lot more efficient at this than, you know, everyone trying to do it on their own. Other communities are engaging their auditors as well. And the other thing that's interested me is if we do engage them, this, they're actually gonna be auditing it for compliance next year during our audit. So I kind of feel like it's knocking out two birds with one stone.
And when we talk about chart of accounts, so we're talking about saying that, let's just say today, we have a company who comes in and cleans and replaces the floor mats. And we say, well, where should you record that expense? Well, it should be recorded in some place that's universal, meaning the state of Michigan is saying expenses for that kind of building maintenance should fall under this code. And it's a multiple-digit, I don't know, 12, 16-digit code, whatever it is. And so sometimes you might look at this chart of accounts, and you might say, well, gosh, maybe floor mats should be under this line item. And it might make sense to you, but if everybody else, if all the other municipalities are recording something as germane as floor mats in one spot, and we're doing it in a different spot, it kind of is disruptive, and it might come up in the audit. So this is kind of one of those things where the state has said, here's a bunch of standards, and you've got a team of folks within this accounting firm who say, well, okay, we live with this every day. Instead of each municipality recreating and reinventing all this, we can come in and help you move expenses into the right chart of accounts.
Yep. And I'll be involved with it. Our, I'm sure you guys are aware, we use B S N A for our accounting software. They're actually involved too, so they'll be part of the second phase. And I did speak to them the other day. So we're looking, we're four months out from year end approximately. And when I talked to B S N A, their turnaround time is two. So that gives us approximately two months to convert everything. It's a very manual process. We have to have the Michigan's chart of account up on one screen, and then all of our, which we have hundreds of accounts, up on our screen and just kind of go through and map it one by one, change funds, change accounts, just to be compliant with the final state of Michigan chart of account. And it promotes consistency across local governmental units.
From one unit to another. And then also, an organization for us. Because over time, we've had employees come and go that might use these. And maybe someone said, gosh, you know, this expense makes sense to put it into this, for lack of a better word, for this bucket. But maybe the state of Michigan feels, no, that shouldn't be in that bucket. It should be in another bucket. And so you've got 3,000 different municipalities deciding where to put these expenses, whereas now you've got the state of Michigan educating maybe some auditors and some, or some accountants and some folks at B S N A. So this is kind of our chance to make sure we're doing everything right.
Yep.
And avoid maybe a future problem, a future issue, when we go through an audit that might result in a problem or a deficiency.
All right. It'll just be a lot, it'll be, it'll be efficient.
Okay, good. All right. Any questions or discussion?
Just one question. So from an engagement of auditors, the definition that you just gave, the explanation, just so our residents know, that's basically what you just explained? It's just basic continuity between the auditors and our township and everything else that goes on throughout the state? It's just like a standard? Is that correct, or?
Yep. So the state of Michigan is mandating that we are compliant with it. So they're gonna help us get compliant with it.
Okay, perfect.
So they have a team of staff that they're doing this. So they're very fast at it.
Okay.
So they're familiar with the chart of accounts. They're gonna download ours. They're gonna, you know, map it all out for us. And then they'll give it back to me. And then I will engage with B S N A to do all the mapping that they need to do. So I'll definitely be involved with it, for sure.
Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'll add, there have been times when we've had a gap in the finance director chair for various reasons. Maybe someone retired, and someone, you know, weren't successful in hiring someone within the timeframe. And I've played that role because while I'm certainly, accounting is not my strength. The supervisor is responsible to prepare and present the budget. So when we've added different line items, and we've tried to decide where do we put something, I've encountered that confusion myself. Because you're looking at the Michigan uniform chart of accounts, and you're thinking, it sounds to me like this expense should be under this, you know, 20-digit line, based on what the description is. But if everybody else in Michigan says, well, no, that really should fall under something in a completely different area, pretty soon your budget just is non-conforming.
Sure.
So sometimes it's a, I feel like sometimes it's kind of consulting with experts, but there's probably also a consensus of a decision of saying, well, it could be in either of these two spots, but everybody else is putting it here, so that's where it ought to be. And we just don't have that global information.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, or is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve engagement with U H Y for assistance with implementation of the new state of Michigan chart of accounts.
And do you?
At a cost not to exceed $9,000.
I think that's best. Yep, good.
Support. Support.
All right, good. We've got a motion by Mr. Witt. With support by Mr. Tommello. We had some discussion, is there further discussion? Hearing done and seeing no public comment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Before we move off the finance department, just to give the board a brief update, we did send out our request for proposals for audit firms for next year. That was something the board had directed us to do. So working with the finance director, she found a bunch from other communities, was able to put together a nice solid proposal package. We have that out, and we should be looking at those sometime by beginning of October.
Yep. We're looking, well, we're looking to present on the 26th.
Yeah. Or at September.
Yep.
Yeah. Good, good. So that would give us plenty of time to be prepared, so. But we're in the process of soliciting proposals for county services.
Yep.
Okay. So a little update there. Thank you, Mr. Witt. Next on our agenda is from the clerk's office, item F 1.
Yes, we received a request from Metro Party Inc. to transfer ownership of the 2022 S D D and S D M licenses with Sunday sales permit a.m., Sunday sales permit p.m. for S D D, Sunday sales permit p.m. S D M mixed spirit drink, and beer and wine tasting permit from Martha Inc., located at 38666 Jefferson. All their paperwork's in order, and all the approvals relative to the liquor license process being completed. This is, you know, Metro Party Store, transferring ownership. Just get to make a recommendation to Liquor Control Commission to approve it.
And this is, and this is after several other agencies have been a part of that?
Yeah. Liquor Control does their section of it as well, and goes through it.
Sure.
We also have the, yeah, the local law enforcement is part of that. So, but it also gives us the opportunity to get our building inspectors in there, our fire inspector in there, to make sure we catch any of those upgrades or anything that might, if a place has been open for a long time, not happen, so.
And at this point, all of our, internally, all of our departments are recommending approval of this.
Everyone's signing on, yeah.
All right.
So if we say no, so?
It doesn't matter.
I understand. He's such a nice guy. He's such a nice guy.
The Liquor Control Commission, like, doesn't care about locals anymore, so.
But it is a step in the process where if we said, hey, look, these guys are horrific players, and, you know, this is a problem, similar to a lot of the other state functions, they're kind of looking for us to say, we've done our due diligence, and we have no objection to this process.
Correct. Yep.
So is there any discussion or a motion?
Just a comment. I think, just like Mrs. Rose said, I think that this, they've been an asset to the community. They've done a really, really nice job in terms of cleaning that place up. They've done a lot of improvements over there. And just like Paula said, they're good operators, and they're very much gentle when you walk in there. And they'll be, hopefully, the new owners will do just as well as they did, because I think they did a nice job.
Yeah.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Is there support?
Support.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Olgiati with support by Mrs. Rose to recommend approval for the request from applicant licensee Metro Party to transfer ownership of the licenses from Martha Incorporated, located at 38666 Jefferson, Harrison Township, Michigan. Does it say to whom? Is that, that's not, it says from. Are we saying to whom the transfer goes?
No, I understand that.
It's 38, it's the Metro Party Inc.
I see. That is from Metro Party Inc.
To, we're approving the request from Metro Party Inc. to transfer the license from Martha Inc.
Gotcha.
It's working a little awkward.
I got you. Okay. No problem. All right, good. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, board. Next on the agenda is item F 2, and that is, scrolling down, lots of stuff on this ledger. Pensions.
Yes.
About the Pure Garden LLC. license, about the Pure Garden LLC. Board members, we did distribute a packet to you, so do have some information.
Had to turn it over to Mr. Huth.
Thank you. I believe the petitioner and councilor are in the audience. The board did ask that there be progress made with respect to this site, and consider a written agreement regarding that progress, if their license was going to get a one-year extension. Since the last two weeks, I have, I've sent you a correspondence that indicates that the exterior of the building has been power washed and painted, landscaping has been cleaned up and brought to standards representative of a model building. The parking lot renovations have been submitted for bits, and on August 17th, the engineering and architectural team revised mechanical, electrical, and plumbing plants, and those were submitted to Harrison Township. You have also in front of you some pictures of these improvements that have been made in the last couple of weeks. I, of course, it's a, it's up to the petitioner to add things if it chooses to do so, but then I also suggested a motion that the board may consider of granting the 12-month extension with three conditions to it.
So the proposed motion is to permit a 12-month, 12-month extension to receive necessary marijuana regulatory licenses from Harrison Township, so long as the applicant performs all landscaping is properly manicured, and debris during construction phase is disposed, disposed of timely, removed in a professional manner. Applicant makes the best efforts to obtain a certificate of occupancy within 120 days after the building permits are issued. The applicant had indicated that their only concern in meeting that would be supply chain issues, but the applicant does acknowledge that Harrison Township is not obligated to grant an additional 12-month extension in 2023, should licensing and site compliance matters still remain outstanding at that time. So I don't know if there's discussion or a motion?
If there isn't any questions, then I don't want to step on anybody's questions. I'm happy to make that motion as recommended by the attorney.
If there's no objection, I'll, we'll take that as a motion. Is there support?
I'll support that.
Okay, we've got a motion with support to adopt the motion, basically extending this for one year with no obligation beyond that if the applicant doesn't follow through.
I wonder if the applicant would be willing to note for the record that they are here and they understand the terms of the granting of the one-year extension.
Would you want them to come up to the floor?
Yeah, just identify yourself, please.
That way the minutes will reflect that the applicant was present, and.
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for having us. Joey Keshbo here on behalf of the applicant, Pure Garden. We do understand that this is our final opportunity to get the license in place. We've already taken pretty significant measures in the last two weeks to show our commitment to this project. At this point, we're waiting on the approval of our MEPs that were submitted on August 17th, as Mr. Huth mentioned, and we're gonna diligently work towards getting that building completed on the interior and exterior, and we have every intention of being licensed as soon as possible.
Well within the 12 months.
Well within the 12 months, yes. And I've already, for the record, I've already documented to Mr. Huth in writing that we understand there will not be another extension next year.
Understood, okay. All right, any questions for the applicant? Well, thank you for coming forward.
Thank you very much.
Realized we had two items in a row, actually.
Me, yeah. I didn't think you guys needed me on the last.
No, 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 I know, but I was looking.
I was here to answer any questions about Metro Party.
They like this hat, put it in that hat. Good. All right, any further discussion, board members, or is the motion clear?
I want by the project, and they are making good progress, so I have no issue with extending that 12-month, 12-month extension for them. I think they've done a good job for the last couple of weeks.
Very good.
So I'm very comfortable with that.
Excellent. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, Mr., all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Board.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you very much. And next is SYO's IT services contract. Board members, SYO has been providing our IT services since 2003. Our current contract with them for support ends September 14th, 2022. This contract has been renewed several times dating back to 2007. SYO has requested a small 2% increase in monthly fees, as seen on the attached proposed contract. I am recommending that we approve the three-year extension of our contract with SYO for IT services at a cost of $2,525 per month.
I'll make that motion.
All right, support. We've got a motion by Mr. Tomonello, with support by Mr. Brado. Any discussion, board members? This would be an example where we've dealt with someone who's taken pretty good care of us, they've performed. We would not be able to afford to hire someone to perform these duties at that monthly cost, so I do believe this is an efficiency. And this is a firm, and specifically an individual who's gotten us out of jams a couple times, so I think this is the right thing to do, and I don't believe in our current climate, a 2% increase is unrealistic for a, a three-year extension, so. Any other discussion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Board. Next is public and board comments. We'll open up the floor for public comments. They can be about any subject that you wish, and we ask that you try to limit them to five minutes and length.
Good evening, board members, residents. C. William Barrio, 26-year resident, clean-cut, do-gooder boy next door, clean-up, fix-up, people helping people. I just want everyone to check out Save Like Sinclair, follow on Facebook, and keep up to date on everything that's going on. Everybody stay safe, and have a wonderful rest of your summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment?
Mr. Superizer.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm not sure if you were going to mention this, but the last music, I think it's the last music in the park was the other day, and trustee Batkins was, of course, in charge of that or overseeing it, and I was there, I think there might have been close to 100 people there, and the music was great, of course, and there were several boats in the water, you know, enjoying it also. And the library volunteers were there, as they usually are, and they're selling things for the library, of course. They're always so wonderful, but it really was a very nice event again. And he has his trusty workers, trusted workers, he's got different workers all the time, every time I go there, and they just park those cars, they get everybody in and out, you know, there are a lot of cars with that many people, and they just do a great job. Thank you.
Yeah, good point, thank you very much. I was unfortunately out of town and unable to attend, but I did hear that it was pretty good.
So I just following up, 'cause I asked Mr. Batkins how the evening went, I wasn't there as well, and he said, they got rained out after about 90 minutes, so we had it from about 6:30 to 8:00.
Yeah.
But he said there was a solid crowd there, and a good band, so we've already had some people that were at a previous concert approached us, and so if anybody has a band out there that is local and wants to play next year, just send that information to either Paul or Rose or Brian Batkins, and we'll consider them when the time comes. But, yeah, I mean, I think it was really a nice thing to bring the community together for a free concert. Everybody seemed to really enjoy it.
Yeah.
And I did want to mention, too, sorry, 'cause there's been some Facebook pushback, somebody was really concerned, like, what is this event?